Twenty ninth, two thousand sixteen, the Board of Education.
Board.
Good. Shoot. I mean, we only had a real... Ask that you speak loud because we only have one mic here and if you don't have the mic, there are weeks to hear you. So anyway, like to start with an invitation, Karen?
Sometimes I get so wrapped up retending to something like that I forget to stop and move away the fact that you're taking care of me, Lord. That you're right, you're with me, and that your goodness and unfeeling love never leave me. Your presence with me is my greatest need, and that need is met every moment of every day. I don't need to chase after it, earn it, go to the store to buy it, repair it or replace it. I want to stop right now and just cherish the blessing of being in your care and to share it in my life. I love you and want to follow you forever. Thank you very much. I hope everybody's enjoying their summer so far and having a good time.
Thank you. Joe, please rise for the flag of allegiance.
Our flag of allegiance is certified by the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, God, and in the temple of the religion of justice.
Okay, next item, approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion for approval?
Second.
For the motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, first item, Catalfamo and associate audit contract action. And we'll wait till you get the mics.
Okay. I'm Pete Catalfamo. Just want to go over a few things on the audit contract that I'm required to bring to the board's attention, even though it's already in the narrative, most of it. I just want to, you know, point it out to the board. You may have gotten the engagement letter. There's just a few things. I guess you're probably... There's a section in the engagement letter that deals with communications, and we put in the engagement letter that if there's a communication required immediate attention, we're going to be able to communicate it to the superintendent and to the board chairman. Is that way we won't have to wait to the next upcoming board meeting? There's another section of the audit contract dealing with non-audit services. Those are services outside the scope or the objective of the audit. And when we perform those services, somebody on the management team has to review it and accept our services. And in the audit contract, we've put in that the board has designated Lori Trussell, who is really the only member of senior management that can do those services. We've also put in a paragraph in the audit contract dealing with third-party service providers. To maintain our independence, since we're doing non-audit services, we have to have somebody from outside our firm come and review the financial statements, since we'll be assisting Mrs. Trussell to do the financial statements. And the last item deals with, there's a section in the audit contract we just sent and still dealing with two-party, two-way communication between the board and the auditor. So we encourage any board member, if they have any questions or any concerns, to bring it to our attention. That's all.
Any questions, Pete? Did the audit contract go up this year?
Yes, sir. We thought about going up 2.5%, but it came out like, we rounded it down, it was like 2.46%. It's twenty-two nine versus...
Only a CPA would say 2.46%. So it came out total?
It was twenty-two nine total, and I think last year it was twenty-two three fifty.
Any questions? Any other questions? Okay, this needs action. Do I have a motion for approval?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, second?
Second.
Have a motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
If the motion passes. Thank you, Pete.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay, next item on the agenda, class size reduction plan. Sandy Kinzel, Assistant Superintendent.
Yes. Can we take it? Sure. Thank you. At the request of Dr. Gaudney, I wanted to share this information with the entire board, although we've had small conversations as we've gone along, so this is our first public information sharing regarding the class size reduction proposal that we had discussed earlier. Just a little background for the public. Class sizes are regulated in kindergarten through third grade. During the first two months of school, there are no limits on any class size, so long this will fall below the district average of twenty-one in our kindergarten through third grade classes. Since about two thousand thirteen, there have been no limits placed on grades four through twelve. Going on from there then, the average class sizes over the past several years, specifically since that two thousand thirteen, have steadily increased. A lot of that has to do with the limits and some of it has to do with funding restrictions and loss of funding from the state level. Over the past few years, we've seen it, an average of twenty-one, which is at the top of the range for the district average of twenty-one in our kindergarten through third grade classes. And that includes ranges as low as class sizes of fifteen, as high as class at the top of the individual limits of twenty-four. On the fourth, fourth through fifth, at the elementary grade, we have an average class size district-wide last year of about twenty-four point five. And again, the range there is smallest of fourteen to thirty-six. We actually had a fourth grade class, I'm sorry, a fifth grade class of thirty-six. It was augmented by an inclusion teacher that pushed in, so we actually had two teachers working in that classroom, which helped to meet the needs. But thirty-six was the actual number in that highest classroom. In grades six through eight, middle school, this is where we saw the most growth in class size, especially at Currituck Middle School, and we were monitoring that closely through this year. The range there in six through eight went from lowest of twenty-two to highest of thirty-one. So as you can see, these numbers are not typical in Currituck County schools, and it makes it increasingly more difficult to be able to meet the needs of our students. Therefore, we're going to be working to improve student achievement through this initiative. Mr. Stefanic met and myself met with teacher representatives from the district, from all schools they pulled together, and Mr. Stefanic asked them, okay, we're in a great place to work, how can we make it better? What can we do better? The number one choice that came up as a strategy for improving overall improvement was to reuse class sizes. They want to be able to give more personalized instruction to our students, want opportunities for hands-on learning that's less manageable when you have larger class sizes, and they want to be able to build stronger relationships, not only with the students in front of them, but also with parents of the students that they serve. So the proposal is this. Dr. Gaudney asked us to look to see what would be possible if we could target class sizes of twenty. What would it cost us in essence? So based on the projected enrollment at that time period, and again, that means graduating all of our students up and looking at projected kindergarten, that's the wild card, that we really don't know how the kindergarten members come in, but looking at projected enrollment by grade. We estimated sixteen new positions would be necessary across the district from K through eight. Want to pause for a second and let you know, and we had this discussion, but for the general public. We've limited our scope to K through eight because we have put additional resources at the high school in previous years in order to achieve higher assessment scores, but also to help manage the numbers in the school itself and be able to help create a better climate of discipline. So we put teachers down there, and we already have a pretty good class size ratio at the high school level, so we're targeting K through eight. And again, sixteen new positions would be if we fully implement across the board for all of the classrooms. Three of these positions, through an increase in ADM, are funding from the state. We estimate that we will have three additional positions allocated to us from the state, so that's three that locally we won't have to absorb. Through analyzing our data and vacancy that occurred, we have one position that we are not going to be refilling at JP now, and they can absorb the students through these staff that they have. So again, that's one that we won't have to pull out of local funding for this. So that brings us down to a total of twelve positions that would be needed to be funded locally if we go with a full implementation, and the estimated cost with benefits and local supplement comes out to about seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Where those positions will be assigned? We decided that because we're still working with some of our numbers that are not yet firm, we typically do not get the withdrawal notification in our classrooms in our district until later on in the summer, so we want to be a little bit conservative in terms of how we're going to approach this, because we don't want to put more resources than we need to and commit to staff for the long haul until we really know that we have the numbers to support it. So we're starting out with nine, this is our new acronym, class size reduction, positions, and then with the three ADM positions that we're going to be getting from the state. So that brings us up to twelve new positions that we're going to be putting into the district. The local cost for those nine positions, we're starting at five hundred and forty thousand dollars. Plan then is to assign one position at Central. There is a second in reserve for them, should we need it, and right now they're showing some growth in their enrollment. With that one position, the average class size at Central would be about twenty-one. With the second position and we add it, then it'll drop to about eighteen point three, I believe. Jarvisburg adding one position makes the average class size there at nineteen. Moyacay Elementary School, one position allocated and average class size of twenty. Sharborough allocating two. One is from ADM and one's for class size reduction. A third position is put in reserve if we need it. Right now their average class size is about twenty-two, so we're anticipating probably needing to put one out there as well. At Grades, two positions, one was allocated for ADM and the other one is for class size reduction, makes the average class size around nineteen. At Currituck Middle School, and this is one that you'll see the biggest shift, Currituck Middle School, class sizes ranged an average of about twenty-eight and twenty-nine the last year. So in Moyacay Middle School, we were able to shift some of those positions around and be able to give some positions to help with equity, so that Moyacay Middle School was sitting at twenty-three and twenty-four, which was a little bit out of filter compared to class sizes at Currituck Middle. So we're allocating four positions, four new positions at Currituck Middle School, plus one position that we pulled from Moyacay Middle School for equity purposes and placed down here. So they're actually going to have five additional staff members there, not all new positions though. That will bring their class size average down to about twenty-three. And at Moyacay Middle School, that's about twenty-three as well, so we've been able to create more equity in terms of their class sizes with this plan. Are we good? Okay. So how are we going to fund this? Essentially, we discussed this as kind of a budget neutral kind of thing. We're not adding new money to the budget per se, because last year's budget was, we had appropriated about one point one million dollars to be able to operate our current expense budget. Through careful spending, being very frugal at times, and also taking advantage of some of the vacancies that presented themselves, we were able to keep some of that money in reserve and not spend it. And again, I know you know this, but just to put it into a context, we did not have a state budget last year nor the year before before October. Our fund balance has helped save us and be able to help us move forward in our operating and be able to plan for the worst-case scenario across the board. So with putting in one point one million dollars into the current expense budget, it allowed us to be able to absorb some contingencies or a higher raise if we were to get it after school started when the budget wasn't quite approved. So our projected spending at this time with the funding from the fund balance appropriation is only going to be three hundred and fifty thousand dollars of that one point one million. So that leaves us with about seven hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars left unspent from the appropriated money in our current expense budget from this past year. We're currently operating on a continuing resolution at the same level, keeping spending at the same level as we were last year. So that's why, in my terms, and Lori would probably argue with me, this is not new money. It's money that we've already put into the budget. How did we get the unspent fund balance and the savings? That came from multiple sources, the salary savings from combining job responsibilities, not filling vacancies right away and waiting for good candidates, and we've reassigned duties along the way. We've had some energy savings and maintenance. We've had a very mild winter, so that contributed to that. We had contingency funds built into the budget that were not used. We had considerable insurance savings and the unspent funds that were across several categories, including transportation and general operations. We didn't need as many substitutes this year that we had planned for. So that helps to save us some money along the way. So why now? As I said earlier, our state budget process has had us in the window much after the school year started, not knowing how much we were going to be funded, what positions would be funded. We're on a clear path right now, but things are starting to stabilize. We expect that we're going to have a state budget before, you know, July fourth, if it goes through over the weekend, and that's their goal. So knowing what we have before the school year starts helps us with budgeting considerably, so we feel a little bit more comfortable about making this recommendation to you because things are starting to stabilize with the state budget process. Fund balance projections, I believe were projected in still a pretty healthy amount there that we feel comfortable with, that you feel comfortable with, keeping a reserve amount in case of emergencies. So we're still in a healthy level there. But there's also an increased emphasis, an emphasis being placed on personalized learning, which requires more teacher attention, as well as our goal to increase student achievement across the district. So we feel like now is the time to take this leap and to invest in our students, our community, and give the staff on board that we can help make a difference.
Out of that seven hundred, then what was twenty-five thousand dollars?
Thirty-one thousand.
Thirty-one thousand? Well, it's not March either, so anyway.
I'm sorry?
Actually, it's not March either, so anyway.
That's right.
Talking about small amount there. How much was from not filling or combining positions?
About two hundred and fifty thousand.
Plus the science, well, the science position that's coming up that just came out this summer added to that too?
Yeah, the science position, while it did the savings, it's just not going to, we're going to shave that off the top because it is a state position. Two hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars came from the salaries.
Question, Sandy, I got two. I know it's not July yet, but it'll be here shortly. Kindergarten numbers.
Yes.
Where are we right now for that?
I can, yes. In general terms, there are two schools that, when I figured the class sizes for getting the average on this, had already exceeded our projected numbers based on this past year. Two schools, Central was one of them, and Lee Jarvisburg is the second one, I could be wrong. Yes, it was. Sharborough is on track. This year we were planning for about ninety-four. We currently have seventy-one. Last year's Knox Island was at fourteen. We're still hovering right at fourteen, and these are actual registrations we have. Moyacay is lagging behind a little bit. Seventy-eight was the number we projected, it was the number we have this year, and they're at about fifty-four. Grades had about forty-four students last year, which is what we projected, and they're sitting at about thirty.
Which is the best normal that I've seen.
It is. It is. In fact, it's probably better, we've had much better response since we've gone to an online system of enrolling, so that we can at least capture their intent to be in the classroom and we can plan appropriately. We need to push more information out to our friends in the media that please remind folks to register before August.
Even still, even still, we know that there's many people that are moving in from the Virginia area, that they're used to school starting after Labor Day, and so it's really not on their top of the list situations.
And that's why we're taking a conservative approach, starting with just the nine positions, because typically, as it gets closer in your right practice, soon as, you know, we start earlier than Virginia schools do, and they're not thinking about, you know, switching their enrollment and registration until much later.
All right, another question. The class sizes at Currituck Middle are so much higher than Moyacay, why is that?
We have more staff at Moyacay Middle.
That's, it wasn't the number of, really the number of kids, it was just the number of staff.
We just have more staff. And I'll be honest with you, Mr. Simmons, it is much harder when you're working with a limited budget to be able to rectify that, because at the middle school and the high school level, you're talking about special licensure. One position at the elementary school can help remedy an entire grade level across subject areas. One position at the middle or high school doesn't do much unless you're going to have that one science teacher teach all grades.
To go back, you were talking about adding one more teacher that was at, which elementary school?
Central.
Central.
That was one, and then Sharborough.
The one that was so high, the highest average was what?
Sharborough.
So if you add the third position, what would those numbers be?
That's the question I was going to ask.
Yeah. It brings it down to about nineteen is eighteen point seven.
I think it's a great plan, and I do appreciate the board.
It's very necessary. As a teacher retired six years, I know what the numbers were like. They were in the twenties, and you did have time to personally speak to every kid every day, because sometimes that's all they need, is just to know that you care about them.
When are we going to start advertising those jobs?
Done. We've already started.
She started hiring.
We've already started contracting contracts, so yes. As far as actually assigning, there's still a couple of war arm wrestling to be held on Tuesday, and those are going to mud wrestle if they grab. That's where they're going.
We could sell tickets for that and get more money, hire another position.
You know what, I just thought of something. Not, not that we're something, but until the budget is actually passed, there is a contingency in there that may provide us with one more additional position for the...
That's all, and what you got?
It is. All right. We got you. All right, so there's still some things that...
Oh, okay.
But we're good. We're good. We think we're in a good place.
Last year, we were talking about that we were over a certain amount of students above our...
Projected.
Where are we going, where are we looking at definition?
Give it up.
We're not going to do it.
And here's why. As we researched and pushed for that, the short story is, the way the numbers are being pulled from, to DPI for their configuration, what's going to be reported on our state report card actually takes a configuration from power school. They're scheduled, the numbers of students that are assigned to a teacher's class, for example, that classroom of thirty-six that I mentioned, there was a teacher, classroom teacher assigned, but also an EC teacher. So what's being recorded is going to be two, it's going to split the baby. And so even at thirty-six in that classroom, what's being recorded is eighteen. So we're not going to, we're not, it doesn't matter. When it all comes down in the launch, they've got it kind of rigged against this proportion.
I'm glad we're taking this direction. I taught educational research for a few years, and the two biggest correlates with student achievement is one, direct teacher instruction, and the other is class size.
Class size.
And I think those class size, I think a few years back, was either eighteen or twenty. It was often what's exposed.
That's because you're talking... Hello?
I'm glad we're doing that.
I agree.
Thank you very much, Sandy.
Sandy, I have one more thing. What school starts this year? I know we had a report last year, two years ago, that was an estimate, you know, in the year two thousand sixteen, we were going to have X amount of students, and in the year two thousand seventeen, we were going to have, and it was an estimation that we did a couple of years back. Can we, what school starts, and we get a number, see how close that estimation was?
Actually, I was on the phone yesterday with Donna Volvo from the planning department and asked her for some of those projected numbers. They're updating their planning, land use plan, and we wanted numbers that exceeded twenty twenty-five, which I don't have, but we have numbers projecting enrollment up through twenty twenty-five. And they're interested in, I talked with Dr. Gaudney about this, but interested in sitting down with the board to do some exercises in terms of seeing where the topics of growth are and getting that future. They're starting the Imagine Currituck initiative to try to get feedback, and I think it's an opportune time for the board to sit down with the planning department, have some of those conversations, so that land will be claimed for future needs.
That number that you're talking about, Mr. Simmons, came when we met with the board under the commission.
Commissions, yeah.
Because it was showing that we were going to have that peak, I think, this year and next year, and then it was supposed to be moving down, but then we're building a lot more houses too.
Those numbers are also, the numbers are also in that facility study that you just updated last January, when Ed came from Raleigh, and so we've done there.
You were asking to see if they were close to what we were projecting then.
Yeah, I mean, two or three years ago, I'd like to see how it was.
Yeah, I'd like to see that too.
I did it this year when I showed up. I saw what the projection was for this year and saw what the population was when I arrived in October to see where, you know, how close we were. Yeah, we're up, we're up some students, but it's in the ballpark.
One last little note on that, Mr. Simmons, let me ask you. We were about a hundred over last year. Well, our planning allotment, that's the ADM increase.
That's right.
So it's being worked into...
It takes a year to catch up.
It takes about a year to catch up.
So you're going to get back with us on what the planning board wants to do for this?
Absolutely. We schedule a time.
Okay, next item on the agenda, North Carolina's pre-K classroom duty. Sandy?
Well, just piggybacking off of what I just said to you, there's some natural implications with adding that many staff members at the elementary and middle school. One, where are we going to put them? So we've been in touch with each of the administrators, and ironically, again, kind of ties into our capacity studies, when we looked at each room, we've said all along that capacity at Jarvisburg was getting very close to full, and that we had the, kind of a swing vote down there with NC pre-K. That classroom was placed into a regular classroom down there, but it could be moved. We could move that classroom and still serve the students in that general area through some of the other classroom space at grades. Well, when we started with this, that was, it started the whole wrong. It takes time to be able to get approval for a new site for moving a sign, so we're in that process right now. Deidre Simmons, who's our coordinator for pre-K, she's made contacts with the building inspectors, the health and sanitation department, fire marshal, all of which has to come and do an initial inspection and make sure that we have the facility that is designed to meet the needs of four-year-olds. We will then receive a temporary license, and then our consultant or licensure will come in and she will do her inspection from more of an instructional standpoint to make sure that we have all of the needs there, and then we should be good to go. Deidre has already contacted parents of the students who are initially enrolled and have been accepted into the program, and they're fine with it, so they're, they've been informed. Staff members from Grades or from Jarvisburg will move to grades. They've been informed, and we're just kind of waiting for a green light to make sure that everything passes with the initial inspections and we can move forward with this, but everything looks good. Mr. Mullins has been real good about checking on some of the playground equipment, the fenced area that's going to need to be moved from Jarvisburg to be able to accommodate them at grades, but overall, it's going to be pretty minimal expense.
How many rooms are we talking about?
Just one. Just one. With the additional teacher being added there, it helps with, without that move, we would be displacing exceptional children's teachers and moving them from a classroom setting into more of an office space, and it's just not conducive for their classes.
Well, we got the room at grades.
And in order to finalize it, the preschool programs, because of all the inspections of the actual sites, they don't consider the transfer of a classroom or a license. We have to actually apply for a brand-new preschool license, and so we sent that, you know, we sent that paperwork in today.
Good timing.
Good change.
You are.
Next, adoption of the 2016 policy updates.
Board should have received another little happy pack from Ms. Jones. Just like last month, we have, the policy group has reviewed all the board policies and made sure that they're in line with the state actions from last summer's session. And we're still catching up on that because they were pretty active last summer. This is the latest pack. When we look through this, primarily, there are revisions to current board policies, and if there happens to be a new policy, it's in a section or a topic area that was already in board policy. So there are recommendations that we're comfortable with. And with that being said, in order to make sure that we can communicate to students and parents, all the policies we're operating under in August, I would like to make a request to the board that they waive the second reading on this. So after today, we can have last month's packet finished and this packet finished, and then we can start updating handbooks and manuals for the school buildings.
So rather than two readings, your request, we do this in one reading?
Yes.
So we have to suspend the board policy? Okay. We need to invoke board policy 2450, suspension of board policies. Do I have a motion?
Submissed.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have a motion in second? All in favor?
Aye.
So we've suspended it? Okay, now we need to, okay, 2016 policy updates and school nutrition policies. Do I have a motion for approval?
Submissed.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes?
Thank you.
Okay, next item, Concerned Geni, do I have a motion for approval?
Submissed.
A motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay. Holy comment session. I don't think we're going to have anybody signing up. Next, information items. Okay, what's the board's pleasure on the July board meeting? Because if we actually have one on our scheduled date of the, of July 7th, it's been a week and a half.
I'm sorry. Is there, is there a reason for, I mean, if we've done this?
There have been some years where we've not had.
We, I was going to say, actually, we might not have one because we have this one so many. As far as our administration goes, is there anything, any rules, needs to be addressed in July? I mean, is there?
Has it today? No.
If it's something important, you call the board.
Or let us know.
Or you can have a special meeting if you want to do it that way.
So we'll go ahead and cancel the July board meeting. Let's see. So if we don't have it, the next work session will be August 4th, right here at the Professional Learning Center at 4:00. And the next board meeting will be August 4th at the historic Currituck Courthouse at 6:30. Okay, next item, administrative changes and announcing our new basketball coach. Mr. Stupiny?
Yes. We've had a pretty active summer, and the board may have seen an announcement that we sent out to the staff of the district about some administrative changes. When we had the change at Currituck Middle School, and we moved Dr. Lutz from Shawboro to Currituck, it just kind of created an opportunity to look at where all our pieces, parts were. And so we made some administrative changes to look at the continuous improvement of the Currituck schools. So I just want to go ahead and make a public announcement on.
Who's where?
So it's kind of like a batting order of a baseball team. So I'll just go right down, I'll start at the northernmost school on Knott's Island, just work my way down the county. So at Knott's Island, the principal is going to be Deb Gorza for the upcoming year. Moyacay Elementary.
Hey, what did Jim stand up? Yeah?
She is on vacation.
No, she's on vacation. Okay, okay.
Running a new career.
Okay. Moyacay Elementary School, principal Whitney Bisbing, assistant principal Brandy Kelly.
Vacation.
Brandy's on vacation too.
Okay.
Moyacay Middle School, principal is going to be Tommy Wilson, assistant principal, to be determined, to be determined in the house. Shawboro Elementary School, principal is going to be Greta Nelson. Greta is here. She's supposed to get on camera. Assistant principal is going to be Susan Camden. JP Knapp stays the same. Steve Bassini, principal, he's found as assistant principal. Central stays the same. Dan Palmetakis, principal, assistant principal Carrie Chapel. Currituck High School, Renee Doughty, principal. Assistant principals, like everybody else, Giovanda, Michael Sasser, Phil Walls, and Kevin Goines. Currituck Middle School, principal Matt Lutz, assistant principal Abram Davenport. We call him Dad. Griggs, same. Angela Lasher, principal, Carrie Chapel, assistant principal. And Jarvisburg, same. Dawn Belangia, principal, assistant principal Kelly Flora. We're inside of 12 hours when those new assignments take effect, but everybody's been transitioning and talking to each other and sharing information across channels, and we'll be ready to jump off the diving board first thing tomorrow morning. For those who aren't on vacation.
You'll jump off.
Yeah. And at this time as well, after an internal interview process, pleased to announce that our new varsity basketball coach for next year is going to be Matt Lutz. So welcome aboard, Matt. Did you bring a ball to dribble around or?
We'll be releasing this to the press tomorrow.
Yeah, if I talk too fast, if people are ready, we'll get it to you.
Okay, next item, you're not next item. Also, your information items, that and all.
Thank you, Matt. Just two quick information items. First, reporting on Mary Kate Morgan, our former representative, steward representative. Last week at the FFA convention, she was voted state officer, so she'll be representing Currituck and at FFA, state convention, so a very, very proud of her. She is going to be the state reporter, Mr. Morgan, so, too, for Mary Kate. Secondly, David Baldwin of Baldwin Automotive down in Coinjunk has donated two great boulders. I call them boulders, but they're bigger than rocks and smaller than boulders, for the side of Willis's bench down in high school. I went down and saw David, and his comment to me, and I'll read it to you, is when I said Mr. Willis and what he was for, he said, "Mr. Willis, I wouldn't take any money for this." He said, "He was always there for me to answer any questions, he would pay with anything I asked. You have me more than you ever known over the years," he said. Kind of choked me up a little bit. The funny thing about this is, I've done this project, we've worked on this, I haven't talked to one person that hasn't been in awe of us. If I needed someone, they'd run. He's hauling these up the street while I was rolling down. So I said, "How we live this, it's going to be up there Tuesday." It's just amazing. Everybody I dealt with on this has been so great when it comes to those. Thanks for watching that. Keep us watching that and seeing them.
Next, I would like a motion to recess the board meeting, and we will reconvene probably in a couple hours. And I'll give the press my phone number if you want to call. I'll tell you what action we've taken after we reconvene. That way you don't need to hang around for two hours.
Can we have our comments before that? Board comments?
Yeah.
I got one comment. Everybody, you know, you have those students sometime in your life that, on this board, we've had students who were just above and beyond, and you wonder what happened to them four years later. Yesterday, I'm on a construction site and a car pulls up, and I'm thinking, "Oh God, it's the building inspector." And I looked over and it's Jonathan Jackson. For you, for those of y'all who don't know, Jonathan was our student school board member four years ago, correct? You know he's a good student, but I look over here, he's on a board meeting taking notes. And he's like, "He's not here." Jonathan, you want to say anything real quick?
I just want to thank everyone, and I love giving back to the community that helped me to where I am today. And it's always good to see fellow board members here doing such a great job. And I try to watch from afar and see what the media reports, so just keep doing what you're doing.
And tell them where you're going to school?
Oh, I go to University of Virginia. I'm about to finish up a Rising Senior now, so.
Yeah, what's your major?
Government history.
And Jonathan's speech was, "Someday, I'm going to be president."
That was partially a joke, so.
This year. Right-in candidate. We weren't fond if it was this year.
Exactly. Too ahead of the, he's got a little.
And I just want to thank Jonathan, Jonathan for coming back.
Of course. Thank you.
Any board members having a comment?
Just that we had a very successful end of school with lots of beautiful graduation ceremonies and everything went really well, and hoping everybody's having a great summer.
No, I'll say one thing. I, I've been out to the reading camp, I know, on Knott's Island twice. My daughter's going to it, so I've gone out to see, but check out, we've got some really excited kids that are going to these camps. I hope all the other schools are going, as well as Knott's Island, is they have really enjoyed themselves. They were, I will say, my daughter was a little resistant at first because it's summer and I was ruining her summer and, you know, et cetera. But now that we're into it, they have really enjoyed it. I've seen some progress from her, and, you know, I just want to thank Sandy Kentsel and all the staff that's taking part of their summer to come out and help these kids. I mean, I, they really seem to be enjoying it. I've talked to one of the moms, that their daughter's going to Central, and she's enjoying it, and, you know, it's a really great opportunity, and I hope everybody.